This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, City Council meeting.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. That's where we make one motion and vote on that one motion for all of the items that are on that consent agenda unless council or staff would like to see one or some of those items moved to the regular agenda where we would act on those separately. Sandy, you did have one addition to the consent agenda?
I did. Under number five, Consent Agenda Letter A, number seven, the City Administrator's Report for the Month of January 2020 was uploaded to the city website.
And anybody want to move anything or are we okay with that one addition? Be looking for a motion to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keel and second by Chestnut that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We're not going to get very far if we don't make motions. Regular agenda. Sandy.
All right. Under number nine, new business letters B, C, and D are removed from the agenda. And also under number nine, new business letter E, we're removing Robin Larson from the operator's license application. And that's it.
Okay. Otherwise, just with those changes, we're looking for approval of that agenda. Move to approve. Holy cow! Motion by Martin, second by Peterson. All right, we approved the regular agenda. I guess I like it better the other way. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a thank you letter from Craig Corrigan. That's on page 123 of your packet. Remember, he's the Christmas stamp guy. He's thanking for our efforts through the process. That's just for informational purposes only. Next up, we have, I know that we do this in a motion, but this is really informational purposes only. We don't need to make a motion on this for these two meetings. The February 18th meeting, Tuesday, February 18th meeting, according to our ordinances, since there's an election that day, there's a primary, Sandy said what, Supreme Court Justice? Okay. So, we cannot hold a council meeting on an election night, so the meeting that's supposed to be held on Tuesday, February 18th will change to Wednesday, February 19th, again at 6:00 PM. And then the meeting that's on April 7th, again, that's election night. And that will be changed to Wednesday, April 8th, 2020. Public input, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? If you do, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Brett Gearing. I actually live in the county. I don't technically live within the city, so I don't know how much weight my words are going to have. But I have a question on the whole smoking ban thing. I don't understand it. How did it even come about? Am I not allowed to have a cigarette, you know, 15 feet from my kids when they're playing in the park or, you know, by my car here, standing out by my car in an open air environment? I'm not understanding how you guys can ban smoking in a public area.
Public input is your opportunity to give us information and...
Well, my fault. This is my first council meeting, so...
That's okay. I'm trying to explain. I'm just trying to explain to you how it works. And I can tell you what we could do, Brett. We can have one of our department heads or our city administrator talk to you about how we came to that point, okay? I can tell you that the city council did vote on the smoking ban and it was a unanimous vote. So, they felt very strongly that it was, it was a good, there was a good reason for it. I appreciate it.
Any query on that or question on that reason? Or not right now?
No. I mean, give your reasons why you don't think we should do that and, like I said, I'll make sure that one of our department heads gets an opportunity to talk to you in the near future here.
Okay. Would you like it in writing or make an appointment deal?
If you can, if you can get us your information, then we would know who to contact. That'd be great.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else that would like to give public input on a non-agenda item? All right, let's move on then. We have our community department head reports. Do we have somebody from, what group is it?
Liz Kinnear.
Oh, Liz is here? Okay. Hi, Liz.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Hi. I am here on behalf of WACAN, and I am Liz Kinnear. I'm the Exhibit Room Coordinator for the Wapaka Area Public Library. We typically host about six to eight exhibits downstairs in the exhibit room. And my job is to plan and coordinate those exhibits and then develop the programming, excuse me, to go along with those exhibits. On behalf of WACAN tonight, I was asked to give you an update on the Yuletide Trail that happened in December. So, this was from the previous, the last month's, or, excuse me, last month's WACAN meeting. The Yuletide Trail held December 14th was the first large collaborative event for the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network. Planning began in September and with help from our member organizations, the city, schools, Danes Hall, and other individuals and businesses, this first time event was a huge success. Main Street from the Holly Center to the Danes Hall was busy all day with shoppers, visitors, and residents carrying their cookie tins for the first community cookie exchange. The tins, a fundraiser for the Wapaka Historical Society, brought together local businesses as sponsors and other Main Street locations as cookie steps. The Holly Center, library, Touch of Glass, and Danes Hall all held family activities throughout the day. Even Santa visited the Danes Hall in the afternoon for pictures. The lighted trees and the Christmas tree and the bandstand all set the mood for the event. Two groups of carolers walked up and down Main Street. It was a wonderful community and family event, and we look forward to hosting the second annual Yuletide Trail on Saturday, December 5th, 2020. The library, as mentioned in this, was a participant in the Yuletide Trail, and we had great feedback as to how the community received it, and we're excited to be a part of it again with WACAN next year. So, back to the library and our exhibit room. We host exhibits ranging from textiles to Vietnam War to Youth Art Month. We host Youth Art Month annually in conjunction with Wapaka School District. Currently, we have an exhibit called Thinking Money for Kids. It's a traveling exhibit, and we are one of 50 libraries in the nation to host this exhibit. We were given a grant to host it. It's a museum-quality exhibit targeting financial literacy for school-aged children. So, we're really excited to have this exhibit in. And one thing I learned, I had to go to training for this in Washington, DC. We are, out of the 50 exhibits that, or, excuse me, 50 libraries that have this exhibit, we are the only one of those libraries to have an actual dedicated exhibit room, a space for arts and cultural programming. So, I want to thank the city and the community for supporting that because it really is a credit to our community that we're able to have the exhibits that we have come into the library. The goal of the exhibit room and the library is to provide cultural programming for those who are limited in opportunities to travel. All of our exhibits and programs at the library are either free or very low cost, so we really strive to reach all aspects of our community. This year, we hosted six exhibits, and we had almost 19,000 patrons step in to visit those exhibits. We hosted seven programs in conjunction with our exhibits, and we had almost 1,000 patrons participate in those programs. As a library as a whole, we hosted 650 programs and had 11,900 patrons approximately attend these programs. And that includes children's programming all the way from baby garden up to teen programming here and outreach programming, so out at schools and daycare centers and adult programming. And that goes from young adults all the way up to seniors. So, we really provide a great range of services. The library strives to develop and maintain relationships with community partners, and WACAN is really a great opportunity to strengthen this network. A great exhibit, or, great example is our next exhibit coming in this summer, which is called Faces of Wapaka, You Belong. And that ties in directly with a project called Drawn Together by Kindness. And Laura is here to talk about that as well, a little bit, which we'll talk about in a second. Chat has been working on isolation for their project this year, and we really wanted to do something to draw, draw attention to that, and this exhibit will do that. We'll have approximately 50 community members participate in the exhibit. They can share their story and show that our community is made up of a wide variety of different people and that we all belong in this community, no matter who you are. So, I'll let Laura talk more about Drawn Together by Kindness, but I just want to say thank you to the city council for your continued support of the arts and cultural efforts within our community. We see a huge difference in the library on the effects of our patrons. So, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the council for just giving me a moment to talk. I'm with WACAB, and we are collaborating with the library for the summer for a group called Drawn Together by Kindness. It's a community art project, and so what we're doing is we're reaching out to everybody in the community, whether it be the Lions, Rotary, schools, churches, trying to get everybody involved in making a kindness flag. I've brought packets for everybody, all of you. As city leaders, I'm hopeful that you will take one of the packets. All you need is just permanent markers, so flags are in there. You have a prompt question to think about, what do you think of when you think of kindness, love, and gratitude? Create your flag, and then you return it back to the library. So, it's really easy. So, I brought packets if I can distribute them or just leave them with somebody at the end here.
You can give a peg and peggle.
This community art project will be put up during Arts on the Square Week, during the arts appreciation. We're looking for about 2,000 flags. It's not a small mission, but I think that we can do it and Wapaka can get it done. So, with your help, we hope that we will. Thank you.
All right. Anything else under the community members? All right, let's go right to the department heads then, and we'll start with Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Good evening, council members. My report starts on page four of the packet. This is, again, our start of our very busy part of the year with the auditors and closing the books for 2019. The auditors will be in for preliminary on Friday, and then their final work will be done in February. So, I'm hoping to have the financials done by April this year for everyone to see how well we're doing. Preliminary numbers right now show a positive balance ending for the general fund, so I'm hoping that that continues through the audit. We did receive Tina Dennis's, our deputy treasurer's, notice of retirement effective May this year. I'll be working with Erin Jensen to hire a replacement and possibly reorganizing the department. I'd like to thank Tina for her years of service for this, to the city. She has been a very resource, good resource for me, coming in and learning the organization. So, I want to thank again Tina for her service. We did have a settlement in one of our insurance claims with HFH facility on School Street. We had cooperation with their insurance company, and so we have a settlement. I haven't gotten whose insurance company's paying what, but I'm sure I will. And we have taken precautions on making sure that the ICE conditions in the rec center area is, are taken care of. So, we're trying to avoid another accident. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
All right. Kathy, thank you. Peg, how about the library?
Well, so, we started off this week with a big snowstorm, which did prevent the library from opening on Saturday. So, we, it's always a hard decision, but we want to make sure that our library patrons and the staff come in to work at the library can be safe. So, we were closed on Saturday. Extra busy on Monday, though. So, we started 2020 with our strategic plan, and we started in full force, starting, first of all, with fine-free materials for kids and teens. So, all of those materials that are checked out, that are either a child's book or a teen's book or a teen video, those things come back and they don't have any fines that are accrued if they come back late. So, that's a real step in the right direction for those families who really can't afford to pay those fees. You know, you hate to think of that family that's deciding whether, well, whether they need that book at the library and they're going to pay their overdue fee or they're going to buy a loaf of bread. So, with 45% of our school district being on free and reduced lunch, we feel like this is a really good step for the library. In addition to that, we added another Friday, another hour to our Fridays, so we're open until 6:00 in the evening. And we've had a few patrons stop in and say how wonderful that is because they can start their weekend with the materials that they need from the library. Another part of our strategic plan is really about inclusive services. And when we started looking at our demographics for our community, one of the things that really jumped out at us is that 20 to 30-somethings are the largest group, and yet we don't see them. So, we're reaching out to that group and asking them, what is it they want to do at the library? Many of them have aged out of the teen rooms, so they're no longer there. They don't quite feel like they fit in maybe with the other adults that are there. So, our plan is to create a space where they feel comfortable, where they can do the things that they want to do, and provide programming that they're interested in. We met with a small group of what we call emerging adults last evening, and it was really fun to see their excitement, to think that they have a place again at the library after having aged out of the teen room. We're also doing an inclusive services assessment. That is, an assessment created by the Department of Public Instruction. And one of the things that they're asking about is technology, and one of the things that really jumps out at us is that we don't have enough outlets in our lower level to really adequately provide the technology that's needed. At the exhibit room, I think there are only three or four outlets in the exhibit room. And when you're trying to put together an exhibit that has any kind of technology, it's difficult. So, I'm going to be working with Justin, looking at that problem and seeing if we can't get that as part of our capital plan within the next couple of years. We'll be bringing the annual report together and hopefully have a presentation for you sometime in March. We are starting our film series in February, where every Thursday at 1:30, there's a classic film with the introduction by Jack Rhodes. And please stop in and see Thinking Money for Kids in the exhibit room. It's pretty amazing, even for adults, you're going to have fun with it, but it's a, it's really a world-class exhibit. And I thank Liz so much for writing that grant and getting that grant for us. As she said, we're one of 50 libraries in the nation, so it makes us feel pretty special. Thank you.
Thanks, Peg. All right, let's move over to public works. Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. My report can be seen on page 26 and 27 of the packet. As usual, starting within the sewer department, Jesse and his crew are working on sampling for ultra-low mercury testing. Now, this is through our permit. It's something that the DNR has tasked municipalities, their sewer departments, to go after. Now, mercury, you're probably all aware of it. It cannot be taken out with a treatment, so we are trying to investigate in the city where it's coming from and then take it out at the point source. So, we've done many roundups such as CFLs and thermometers. Now, we're expanding that program and looking within our own collection system to see where it's actually coming from. We started accepting a brine food waste from a local company, local as in within the county. It's become a good revenue source for the plant. We started doing it a couple months ago, and we're seeing revenues of up to $2,000 to $3,000 a month from accepting this. It's, it's been good. It's not going to last forever, though, a few more months, but it's a positive note. We received the report from UW Milwaukee Energy Department that came, a student group that came and worked with us about our energy usage at the plant. We have a report. We're going to be reviewing it. We will look it over, and it shows that we could save up to like $19,000 in energy savings. Hold on a second. $19,000 a year. Just wanted to make sure I said that right. But everything comes with a cost, so we're going to be reviewing their recommendations and seeing if we want to move forward with some of these things, but it looks pretty promising at this point. Streetside, we definitely have had some recent snow events. It sounds like things have been going pretty well. Just talked to Roger just the other day. You know, our crew has had a, we've been fully staffed for about a year now, and they've made some tweaks along the way with some of these younger guys. And he made a comment the other day that we, we got this, the city cleared two hours quicker than what we did last year on average. So, they're changing things up. They're tweaking it. They're making it better, and they're getting the roads clear for all of us. Speaking of snow, we had our new snow blower come in. It's a beast. It can throw snow about 120 feet if you really wanted it to. Our old snow blower is on the surplus site. We're hoping to get about 15,000 for it to go back into our replacement funds. Main Street, so we had our 60% plan that we submitted to the state historical society or preservation office, excuse me. Those are still in review. We're still waiting for those comments. We cannot get approval on our 60% plan until we get those comments back and address those. That's important. As we're looking forward to get that approval as we need to, the next step is get those property acquisitions with the temporary, temporary limited easements and fixed easements. That's the next step. So, we've talked about that in the past. We have a plat that can't be finalized until we get that approval, but we will be reaching out to the local businesses about those acquisitions. And again, there'll be a cost associated with that, which was broken down several councils ago. We kind of gave a breakdown of what we expected those acquisitions would cost us. We completed our third public information meeting about a week ago. It was very well attended, 40 to 45 people. It went much longer than we expected, a lot more questions than we expected, a very good discussion. A lot of positives came out of this meeting, so we're very excited as to the direction we're taking and the feedback that we're getting from the public and the business owners. Granite Street, I just received our 60% plan from the designer today. I haven't finished my review, but basically what that triggers is now I have enough information to finally go forward and move with a public information meeting on Granite. I have not set that date, but it's, it's coming shortly, and I will advertise, just like we did for Main Street, we'll advertise, we'll send out letters. We'll talk about everything Granite Street here soon. Water Department, we are advertising for our new operator position, so that's out there. We're accepting applications for a certified operator. We received several so far. Pretty soon, Mark and myself will sit down and review those and probably get some interviews going here in the next few weeks. However, the position is open until it's filled, so there is no closing date on applications. So, we will continue to take those until we fill the position. Along with that, we have a specification we're working on for a new pickup truck in the water department. So, basically, we got, we're going to add a guy. We need another truck there. And, well, Mark, he's the senior guy. He's going to get the new truck, and then, you know, the, the new guy will get the old truck. So, that's how that one's going to work. Around the facilities here, I didn't know if I should mention this, but we installed the no-smoking signs around City Hall Library reflecting what our enacted ordinance was. So, that's in effect around here. We've also are advertising for the roof replacement here at City Hall, so that's being advertised. That's on our capital plan to replace that. So, I would expect that to be brought to you within the next month or so. And then just department-wide, we've had many work anniversaries in January. Sam Zabel from the Sewer Department is one-year anniversary. John Bartle's been with us four years, and Jake Waller's been with us for 14 years. And the last note I'd like to make is we recently found out that we've been overbilled by WPS $41,000 over the last, since about 2010. When we completed this back parking lot, we had three meters back here, one for the City Hall, one for our streetlights back here, and one for the traffic signal. We did the project. We brought it down to just one, so everything is fed out of one meter. So, once the project got over, we started reviewing our, basically our accounts. We wanted to see what kind of savings we're getting or what we were paying on them. Well, when we started looking through those lists, myself and the help with Barb, Deputy Clerk, saw this one odd account that we had that was on West Fulton Street. It was an unmetered account, so we had to sparse it down because there was about 12 total accounts. We found out that basically we have 10 meters for all of our streetlights down Fulton Street, and then we had this one unmetered one. When we dug into it deeply, deeper, back in 2010, those lights were unmetered, and we were just billed a fixed amount. And the WPS wrote the city and said, you need to start metering those. City made the upgrade, but then the bill never dropped off. So, we figured out that we've been basically double-billed for close to the last 14 years. So, so we're getting a credit or a check of $41,000 back to our general fund.
Good news. Good job.
Yeah. Justin, thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate all your hard work on that, part of it, too. Next up, Parks and Rec, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Starting in the parks, as you know, the city is going to update their comp plan here soon, and, and part of that discussion was updating our court plan, which is the outdoor recreation plan part of it. So, we've decided, after some internal discussion, that we will move forward with doing the court plan with East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. It's a great price, and it really will give us a lot of good input and help us through the process as we move forward. The importance of updating the court plan will be to have it on file, so if we do need to apply for any DNR grants, they'll look at that and make sure that that's updated first. Our last one was done too far in the past to count anymore towards those DNR grants. So, we'll be working with them to update that throughout the year, and I'll keep you updated as we move forward. We are currently, a bunch of us on the staff are working on food truck ordinance that will come forward at some point here. We're making sure that everyone's involved, that needs to be involved, the police department, the fire department, and everyone else, and make sure we bring a good ordinance forward. We did do that food truck rally last year. That was kind of the tester, we'll say, as if there was any interest, and there was quite a bit of interest, so we want to make sure that we're keeping our community safe with this ordinance. We're in the permit application phase with the DNR to do some deep water drop, tree drops in Shadow Lake. Essentially, there'll be fish habitat or fish structures. Right now, we're in the part of the permit that it's been approved, but there is a period of time where people from the community can comment to the DNR or request more information from the DNR. So, you'll see that in the paper. You'll see letters going out to homeowners on Shadow Lake, and if anybody has any questions or concerns, you definitely can reach out to me as well, and I can talk to you about that. So, we will follow all DNR rules. We're going to use some trees. If you remember, we had quite a storm in the summer. Have a lot of down extra trees. There'll be way down and cable down, and they have to be, you know, deep enough underneath the water, at least five feet, so that they won't get in the way of anything or any boats or anything like that. So, we'll be moving forward with that throughout the permitting process, and we'll be working with the DNR on that. If you happen to be out by Swan Park, Josh and Casey are putting in a lot of work out there on some pretty cold and windy days. We're redoing, as part of our capital improvement plan, the shingles and the siding on our buildings out there. We have a lot of different sheds and buildings out there, and they've started doing siding on one of them, and it's looking really good. So, if you get a chance, go out there and take a look. It's going to look really nice out there this summer. As far as the rec's concerned, the trails are still being groomed and are freshly groomed after this last snow out at Swan Park, and we also have the skating rink cleared off. So, we started advertising that today. Josh was down there making sure it was cleared off and a path to it. So, if you know anybody interested in using that, go on down and check it out. We do probably have a picture up on our Facebook and our website, so you can take a look at that and see how that's going. Winter Rec Fest is coming up. If you remember, last year, we did have to cancel that due to unsafe conditions on the hill, so we're going to give it a go again. Looks like we'll be okay. February 8th, from 3:00 to 7:00, we'll end with fireworks again, as we have in the past. February 8th, from 3 to 7, we'll end with fireworks again as we have in the past. And this year, we're gonna add, in conjunction with Tim over at Adventure Outfitters, we're gonna do like an Arctic Dash. So it'll be a event that people can sign up for, and it's kind of like an obstacle course with snow hills, tires, all sorts of goofy stuff. I think they're gonna be pulling themselves in kayaks on the snow and some really fun stuff. So we'll have the sled dogs there, we're gonna have some food trucks there, speaking of food trucks, and some other activities for the family going on. So come on out and check that. Both Cassandra and I have recently signed up to complete our CPRP, which is Certified Park and Recreation Professional Certification. So we'll be working on that together throughout the year to make sure that we're moving forward in our profession and, and making sure that we're representing the city well. So we'll continue to do that, and I'll let you know if and when we pass at the end of the year here. In the senior center, a couple of quick things. Sarah's going to be going out and doing some training in March to create, not create, but start a new program down there called Rock Steady Boxing. And we're gonna partnership with Theta Care a little bit on that because they do a little bit of this already. And what it is, is it's a boxing program for those with Parkinson's disease. And you're working on balance, working on strength, and it's a whole program set up just for them. There are some initial upfront costs, and she is doing some grant applications and requesting some money to do that. But it may also, you know, kind of move into a direction of doing some other boxing classes as well, maybe for some, we'll call them younger seniors, as they come in for different things to do. But the main focus will be for those with Parkinson's in our community and try to help them get through that as best they can. Memberships are coming in very quickly as well. We're about halfway to where we normally are, and that's without, for lack of a better term, the snowbirds coming back and signing up. So memberships are doing really well so far this year, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, we have Sergeant Brent Krieger here tonight, representing the police department. Brent?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Reports on page 33 and 34. The police commission met at their regular scheduled time on Tuesday, January 14th. The commission reviewed the job description for the new narcotics investigator position. That job description was compiled using other agencies' job descriptions that are members of the Central Wisconsin Drug Task Force, and then also agencies that have positions dedicated to drug investigations. So the officer chosen for this position will begin those job responsibilities this summer. Also, the commission was advised of the move from Uniform Crime Reporting, or UCR, to the National Information-Based Reporting System, NIBR. Both those programs compile and report crime information to the federal government. So where UCR was more of a broad summary type of reporting mechanism, NIBR would be considered incident-based. And so the advantage of the incident-based reporting system is that it allows for more detail in the data collection process, which can then be analyzed. We will be required to continue reporting UCR as well as the new NIBR system through the remainder of the year, at which point we'll formally switch to NIBR. But all police departments are mandated to have this change completed by January 21st of '21. Also, we're currently in the process of looking at and updating all of the department's general orders or policies. Try to bring them current with best practices for any changes in case law. We have approximately 117 of those that need to be updated, it's gonna be a little bit of a project. Police Department, Mayor Smith received a letter from the Community Action for Healthy Living. They conduct tobacco retail compliance checks in the city of Wapaka. So the purpose is to verify retailers are checking IDs, not selling tobacco to minors. That's through a problem called Wisconsin Winds. They reported 11 spot checks in the city in 2019. Those were a variety of locations and retailers, and their report indicated no violations. And then lastly, the department did receive a thank you card from the family that was adopted by the department and the commission for this past Christmas's Adopt a Family program. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Brent. Josh?
If you've been on the city website, which most of you probably have, you know, that looks a little bit different. We refreshed the look on that, and that was part of getting the new logo and new branding out. I've been working on other projects with that, helping update email signatures, letterheads, business cards, that sort of stuff. So I'm trying to find all the little nooks and crannies that we have our old logo and getting the new one out there. Myself, along with Aaron, Sandy, and Kathy are gonna be getting together soon to brainstorm and start a process to look at different city processes, how we can go paperless, how we can make our processes more up-to-date utilizing technology. And we're gonna start by brainstorming all the different things and figuring out which ones make sense to attack and kind of what order. So I'd say over the next handful of years, we're gonna be looking at those sort of things and making improvements as they make sense. We do have a date selected for Electronics Recycling, Friday, April 24th. No other details have been worked out, we're just on our vendor's calendar to have that date secured. And then I've been getting some quotes in and working with Chief Hozell on some security system upgrades at the police department, including their key fob system and alarm panels. So that'll be something we'll be working on soon as we review materials that we receive.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks.
Sandy?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report starts on page 53. As touched on earlier tonight, we will be having a spring primary, February 18th, for Justice of the Supreme Court. I am expecting my ballots on the 28th, so if there's any member of the public that would like to absentee vote, please get ahold of me at City Hall for that. And also, we will be having an April 7th spring election. All five incumbents are on the ballot, including Mayor Smith, and also Todd Forsthat has filed for the 4th Alomantic District. And then also included in my packet, I always put my licenses issued, and this time I put the totals for 2019. So you'll see that in my packet, and that's it.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. Before you go, Aaron.
Jerry, can I just ask you to just touch on a couple of things that you touched on this afternoon at our meeting? Just the grant, and can you, can you come up here and just talk about the grant and then also the fundraiser that you had? And, and anything else you want to talk about with the fire department? Sorry to put you on the spot, but I was gonna ask Andrew, but I figured since you're here.
Thanks. For those that don't know me, I'm Jerry Doom, and the fire chief of the Wapakia area fire district. What Mayor Smith is referring to is the new fire truck that we ordered back in the last year, last spring. We just put it into service last Monday night, January 13th. Also, our fire department received a FEMA grant with the help of Kathy for $150,000. And we purchased all new air, air packs for the firefighters, so they're all in the new, all of them are on the trucks and in service as well. What else did you have?
Fundraiser?
Oh, we just did a fundraiser at the Wheelhouse and Becker Marine, so we want to thank those people for supporting us out there. We raised $3,120 just on a few-hour activity, so it was very nice.
Awesome. Thank you, Jerry.
What's that?
All right. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Okay, so let's touch on the strategic plan update really quick. So this Thursday, we have focus group meeting set, that's January 23rd, and that's gonna be with our business leaders and community partners. That is one of the last legs in our strategic plan. As you guys know, you started that last May, we're picking it up and we're getting very close to the finish line. The other piece of that and kind of the final, one of the final things is a community survey that's been out. We've actually had really good response rates for that survey, 180-some as of this morning. To be statistically significant for our population, it had to be about 72, 73, something like that. So we're pretty happy with those numbers. We'll take the input from the focus group and the, and the surveys, and we'll blend it with what we have. As we have some information for a draft survey right now, and we'll bring that forward to you when it's completed. Likely sometime February, March is what we're thinking. Just want to touch base on the signs, I got a lot of calls for the signs that were put up at St. Mary's Building. The signs look like for sale signs, they in fact state that they're available and not for sale. Did talk to Fefferley, who was the real estate company, as well as Nino Pedrelli. And those are advertising basically a possible partnership with him to develop the site in the case that that happens. Obviously, we are still going through with, I know the Arts and Culture Group is doing the feasibility study, and they are continuing to work through that over the next few months. And at the same time, Nino is, Mr. Pedrelli's working towards possible partners in case that doesn't work out. So all the wheels are just continuing to move there. It is not for sale, is my main point. Development, I just want to give a quick development with some of the trends we're seeing. And most of the interest we've seen in development lately here in the city of Wapaka revolves around three different things. Multi-unit housing continues to be a big thing, even though we have some projects that have been done recently or currently being done. We have people that continue to approach us with questions and interest in that. We have small businesses that are interested in our downtown area, that's, that's one that we frequently get some calls on. And then expansion projects from within the city from our current commercial businesses. The multi-unit housing and the continued interest in that is very exciting, and it's great to have new development. It also brings up the question on, you know, where does our ratio sit for renter occupied versus owner occupied? And how does that impact us in the future? And that's something that we'll probably talk about here in the near future, as far as maybe redoing a housing study, bringing us up to date. The last one was done in 2014, there was a small one done in 2015, but it wasn't very comprehensive, focused around the downtown stuff. So likely be, be seeing something with that. Evaluations, I know some of our department heads are just finishing up some evaluations in their departments. I'll be meeting with them to see how that went for their personnel. Main Street presentation, just wanted to just give credit to Justin. I thought Justin did an excellent job in the Main Street presentation last week. He did have, he had mentioned he had a lot of questions, over an hour's long, probably 40 minutes was questions, and I thought he did an excellent job responding to those and clearly explaining them. Pizza Hut closure, I did want to mention that, just because it's kind of a visible thing. We, we do know that that building does still have a lease from Pizza Hut, two-year lease, and they're working to, to sublease it. I do know that there are some people that are, have expressed interest in it as well. To be honest, I don't even know, they could not share who those people were, but that is kind of working through right now. ATV, UTV updates, we have not had any complaints. We are working with Gene Goody still on the signage, we, in a conversation with Justin and Chief Hozell, we did talk about having signage mainly in the downtown area to mark the restricted areas, to make sure users know that. Obviously, it's been the winter, we haven't had a lot of use. I'll keep you updated as the spring and summer comes around to see if we have any issues. So far, so good. I wanted to touch base on something we just heard, and Justin and I and Beth from the airport. This is a meeting this week we had. We got some unfortunate news from the BOA on, on some funding for the reconstruction of our Crosswinds runway. We're working through that. They did a wind analysis, and in order to be eligible for the 95% funding, you have to meet a certain wind analysis, and we come up a percentage and a half short of that, and that dates back over 10 years. So it's not like if we did it again next week, or if we did it again in a year, that that would change. It's kind of a running total for 10 years. So we are working with our contacts at the BOA and looking for solutions within that short-term and long-term. It, it is in good enough condition to operate again for the remainder of 2020, in speaking with Beth. The only other thing I want to give a plug and, and for our department heads and some credits, they, they organized to put together a staff appreciation for all the staff that does so much for us on a, on a day-to-day basis. We're constantly asking of them. Department head served our staff in a cookout for lunch on January 9th, just burgers, brats, that kind of stuff. Could have been healthier, but anyway, it was, it was a nice gesture from department heads, and we appreciate our staff. So Mayor Smith, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Aaron. Josh talked a little bit about logoed stuff and getting it on our new logo on, on many things. They're also looking at updating their business cards with the new logo. So council members, this would give you the opportunity, if you want business cards, if you don't have them, to contact, do we have a contact yet, you or?
Yep, you can reach out to me if you are interested in business cards, get me your contact information. I can shoot you guys all kind of a format of what it looks like, so you know what to share with me, and I'll collect that and work with Josh.
All right. Sounds good. Let's go to new business then. We have, under new business, we have a request from the Community Blood Center to hold their 17th annual Wapaka Channel Lakes Blood Drive. And this will be held in front of City Hall Library on Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. They're gonna need three parking spaces on Main Street, the use of the gazebo, and to place a banner on the City Hall grounds. I don't know if Alice is here tonight, but.
Alice's replacement is.
Oh, okay. All right, sounds good.
Hi, my name's Tom McGreevy, I'm the manager of donor recruitment at the Community Blood Center. And first, I want to express our gratitude for your continued support of this drive. Summer is by far our most challenging time to collect blood, and these large, one-day, large collection events do wonders to boost our inventory at our most difficult times. And last year, here in Wapaka, we had over 170 people show up to donate at this drive, and we took home 146 good units. And what that means is that every unit saves about three lives, and you affected over 430 people that were, that were directly affected in this community. So, so thank you, and we'd like to continue that support this year. July 8th is the day. We would like to request use of your grounds in front of City Hall and the library here. Actually, I don't think it's just three parking spots, I know that says that on the agenda. Last year, we used the whole strip in front of the City Hall here, as I remember. I also want to add in here, we put tents on the grounds the night before, so I just want to double-check that that, that is okay as well. So I am here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so the tents, you didn't have any issues with putting the tents up the night before?
No, we have a rental company that, that comes and does that for us. So no, there were no issues, I think there's three, three canopy tents.
Okay. Brent or Aaron, any issues with all of the parking stalls tied up for that day?
Can you remind me what the, I don't think so, can you remind me just again what the time is?
So the, the, the actual time of the drive will start at 10:00 AM this year. We're actually, because we've been successful the last three years here, we're, we're adding 30 minutes to it. And so we're gonna start at 10:00 AM this year, we're gonna go until 6:00 PM. So setup, though, we'll need to be here an hour ahead of time, so 9:00 AM is when we need those street parking stalls, I guess, cleared. And as the mayor mentioned, we, we will come here the night before to set up the tents on the grounds.
Sounds good, thank you. Justin, you don't remember any issues last year with all of them being taken up?
I do not, but I think that if you need to reserve these parking stalls, you should do it at 6:00 AM in the morning, not 10:00 AM, because it'll be full by then.
Yeah.
Right, so we could have Public Works put some cones out or something like that?
We can handle that.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else, any other questions? We need a motion to approve this then.
I'd like to move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Higgins, second by Fair, that we approve of this request to hold a blood drive on City Hall Library grounds on Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. Any discussion with the parameters that were listed?
I'd just like to say I donated last year and the staff was fantastic, and it was a good experience.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready to vote? On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming. All right, we're, we're skipping B, C, and D, those, those three have been withdrawn. License report 1487, which is on page, am I, I'm going in order, right?
133.
Is page on 133. Again, these are bartender's license, we would need a motion to approve these. We would need a motion to approve these.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report fourteen eighty-seven.
Brian, we're removing Robyn Larson off of this one.
Okay.
You want to put that in the motion, please?
Okay. Steve, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for reminding me. So minus one on there. Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next up, we have a resolution fourteen forty-seven. This is a resolution for the Fire Department to participate in the Wisconsin Service Award Program, and Jerry and Steve are here tonight to explain what that exactly means to us. So Jerry? Look on page one thirty-four of your packet for the resolution to.
You take the podium.
All right. Thanks again for hearing us out. Again, I'm Jerry Dooman, Chief of the Fire Department, Captain Steve Fenske, representing the firefighters of the Wapakah area Fire District. Reason for attending tonight's council meeting is we would like to enroll in the State of Wisconsin's Service Award Program, basically their retirement fund for volunteer firefighters. To be eligible for the program, and according to the Administrative Code ninety-five, to be considered, we need to be, we need to be a municipality or a governmental agency. So as a, as a district, we serve the city and five townships, but we fall short of being considered that municipality. The two thousand five Wisconsin Act one forty-two states that the departments that operate or contracts with the municipality are eligible for this particular program, therefore the resolution. So what we are asking for is the city to sponsor us to, for the state-supported Service Award Program. The Service Award Program would be funded completely through the Wapakah area Fire District, through their budget. The budget line is already in place and will be, will be reallocated to this program in order to leverage more dollars from the state. Right now, there is a, I believe I'm going to say this right, a one to two contribution rate from the state. When I say that, if the Fire Department contributes a hundred and ninety-nine dollars toward the state program, the state will match, or they'll go up to three hundred and ninety-eight dollars per firefighter, but it's also capped at three ninety-eight per year. But that's if all requirements are met by the firefighters. So on behalf of the Fire District, or the firefighters of the District, we're asking for the council to approve and sign the resolution number fourteen forty-seven for the state award program, making us eligible for this year's funding.
Yeah, and there, there is a little bit of timeliness to this too, right? We need to have this in place by January thirty-first?
There is. We, we've been working on this for a little while and working with the state, or the representative for the state program, Mark Strausenberger. He had mentioned that if we have everything in line by January thirty-first and submitted to the state, we would qualify for these funds.
Okay. So again, you're here tonight, first of all, to pass this, the city resolution for this. And right now, what they do for their retirement plan, they, they use an outside source, and it's just a dollar-for-dollar type thing. So what they're trying to do is to find a way to get additional monies without costing the district any additional money. The money, as Jerry explained, but I want to make sure you all understand this, that the money is not just coming from the city of Wapaka's budget. It's coming from the city and all of the, and the other four townships are all participating in that, and that amount is already in the budget, so they're not asking for any more money. So why are they just at the city instead of the township? They only need one of us to do it, and we have the professionals that can do that for them, so we thought this would be the best place to do it. Okay? So again, alls we're looking for is, if you're okay with this, is approval of resolution number fourteen forty-seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve resolution number fourteen forty-seven, which allows the Fire Department to become a part of the Wisconsin Service Award Program. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members.
All right, next up, we have an appointment to the Senior Center Advisory Board, so I'll turn that over to our council president, Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor appoints Kim Kinner to the Senior Advisory, Senior Center Advisory Board. At this time, I need a motion to approve this appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Keeland, second by Chestnut, to approve the mayor's appointment of Kim Kinner to the Senior Center Advisory Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on then. We have, we're on to the City Administrator two thousand nineteen evaluation, and it has my name along with Joe Leonard here, and I'm just here really just to introduce Joe. As most of you remember, I think nine of the ten, or nine, ten of the eleven of us were here last year at this time, where we brought in Joey as our outside source to help evaluate our city administrator. We felt it was good that we had an outside source to help us with this. When department heads are evaluating their employees, they not only are the department heads, but they also have the help of the city administrator and the clerk's office to do that. We felt that since Aaron, the city administrator's position is directly in contact with the city council, the mayor and city council, that we needed some outside help here. I thought it went really well last year, so we're asking Joe to come back and help us with that again. And with that, Joe, I'll let you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. And as the mayor said, just about everyone had been through this process last year, if you recall, except for Mr. Martin, I believe, who's the new, new member. So the, the, it's, it's pretty, it's kind of unique to have multiple bosses, and Aaron is in the unique position to have eleven supervisors. So that, that was, that's kind of an interesting situation that we, that we talked about last year. So what we're going to do is go through the performance review process again. It's, it is well-understood that, and we had this discussion last year, I think, that the council really does not have a very deep interaction with the city administrator, but there is enough interaction and enough understanding of what goes on. We believe that you can give some valuable input regarding the performance of the city administrator. As Mayor mentioned, we think it went well last year, and we really got some good feedback. So the idea is to solicit the feedback from city council and the mayor, and take a look at the areas of strength for the city administrator, and also some areas of potential improvements, so we can give some direct and honest feedback and hopefully improve, improve the position and bring it to another level. So the areas of competency that you'll, you'll be looking at, just as a reminder, will be technical and job knowledge, and this one, again, might be a little bit of a challenge for some of you, but technical and job knowledge, attitude and adaptability, initiative, judgment, efficiency, communication and relationships, personal work habits. And a new one that we'll add, that'll, that'll really be for more, more thinking about twenty twenty-one, will be how well the city administrator communicates the current priorities or the work plan, which I believe Aaron will be talking about later. This will really be for more for future evaluations. So the process will be fairly simple again. The council will receive a performance review template tonight. I have, I have those here with me, and Mayor, I think I'll have to ask you if it's best for me to hand those out now or after council meeting, does, either way.
We can just hand them to one of the, like Justin, and he can make sure that they get handed out, or somebody there. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Yeah, you can.
Okay, so council received the performance review template tonight. I will be asking council to complete and return it in a, in a sealed envelope. In the process, what I think we'd like to do is, is return it directly to the, the front desk at City Hall. I will collect those, go ahead and seal those, they're unsealed right now, but go ahead and seal those. And just City Hall, the, the front desk will, we will let them know that I will be picking those up. I'd like to have them back, or the deadline to have them back would be February fourth. With the idea being that we could, I could come back and present the, the results and have some discussion on February, on or about February nineteenth. So human, or the, the HS group will summarize the results and review the results with the mayor, council, and the city administrator. This will be not only an opportunity for you to review the summarized results, but also an opportunity for you to get some, for me, to get some clarification on what was said, and for the council to offer, offer the council some time for discussion during this time. After that session, the mayor and the city administrator will meet to determine appropriate actions from the summary meeting. Any questions so far? Okay, great. So fairly straightforward process at this point in time. I do have my, my card in each of those envelopes and my number. If you have any questions as you're going through the process, you can feel, email me or call me directly. Okay?
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments or questions on that? Joey, thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing, did we decide what meeting in February we plan on doing?
Yeah, I think the twenty, whatever that second one is.
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
The one that got switched.
Yep.
Nineteen.
We just switched it tonight.
Oh, yeah.
And Joe, you know then to the, it's not Tuesday the eighteenth, but it's Wednesday the nineteenth.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. All right, so you got some homework, everybody. Appreciate, I think we had to, we had a couple of people that we had to keep bugging to get it in last year, but appreciate it if you could get it in as soon as you can, and we can get the process completed and give Joe plenty of time to, to get the information into a format that he would like to present to us. All right, next up, we have, and let me set this up just a little bit here. We have the city administrator work plan for two thousand twenty, and I want to just take this to heart, exactly what I was hearing last year when we did this evaluation. You know, I heard from council members that, you know, although you see Aaron at every city council meeting, you do not work, or the city administrator's position, you do not work with him on a day-to-day basis, so you felt like it was a little bit more difficult for you to evaluate him, and you felt that if we had, if we knew what is, what, what his workload was, what his work plan was, and we could, we could evaluate him on that. Obviously, we can't do that with Aaron, because he started partway through the year, and so he didn't really have a work plan in place, but what he's going to be presenting to you tonight is a work plan for two thousand twenty. So even though this goes along with what our discussion of evaluation is, the evaluation is actually for two thousand nineteen, and what Aaron is going to be presenting to you tonight is his plan moving forward. So I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I do have a document, the two thousand twenty work plan, on page one thirty-five of your packet. Mayor Smith mentioned kind of my, you know, I didn't really have a work plan these first four and a half, five months, and I guess really my work plan probably was to, to listen and learn to our department heads, you, you as city council members, Mayor Smith, community members, business leaders, residents, to determine what this two thousand twenty work plan should look like. If you couple that with me being able to comb over some of the strategic, or some of the plans, we've had a lot of plans done in the last five years, a lot of great, great information and direction, and familiarizing myself with those things, really taking in the ones that we haven't been able to put into action yet, and then meshing those with those conversations that I've had with all of you, to prioritize what this work plan looks like for two thousand twenty is kind of the result of, or the work plan is a result of all of those things. So I do have a couple of different, I guess really two different areas here. Projects already in progress that you've heard me talk about a million times in the last couple of months, and obviously, we do have to complete our strategic plan that staff and council began last May. So finalizing that out, sharing the plan through our community, to our community, through our website, radio, local newspaper, and tracking the progress of those action steps, I think that is really important. We can plan and plan and plan, but then it's getting to those action steps and then holding ourselves accountable to do that. I've seen some models, actually, some municipalities in Minnesota who have, do a really nice job of sharing all that information through graphs, data, that's on their website all the time, and it tracks the progress of the action steps that are put forward in those strategic plans. So that's something we'll work with Wally Jankowski, who's working with us on that, to make sure that that is part of our strategic plan. The next goal on there is complete comprehensive plan and zoning code, rewrite another one, you've heard a million times, and, you know, that's happening over the next six, six months for the zoning code, and over the next, longer than that, you know, eight to ten months for the comprehensive plan. So we'll just continue to work through that, as you guys have heard. I'll work with Andrew Dane and Jeff Sanders to make sure we're updating you a plan commission as we work through that material. Next goal I have down, under things that are already under progress, just work to provide the needed support in our community and economic development department. Over the last year, there's been a lot of staffing changes, as we've talked about. I've brought some staffing proposals forward, and actually, I have one tonight that I'll speak to. I think that's going to be a constant evaluation, as far as where are we at with staffing levels, where do we need to be at, what are we getting done, what are we not getting done, and how does that relate to our needs and wants of the council? So, so that'll be, that'll be something we'll continue, continue to take a look at and review. Also, I mean, with me getting here four to five months ago, or, you know, four to five months ago, you know, I, I want to make sure I have a full grasp on what we need to have as far as levels to be effective in that area too, and sometimes that doesn't happen in a month, or two months, or three months, certainly over the course of two thousand twenty. I, I know I'll have a good, a better grip on that. Also, under that same header, improve efficiencies within the permitting process in our community economic, community and economic development department. That's another thing, as we look at staffing, Rhonda and Elizabeth have also been very cooperative in working with, how can we do things a little different to make our tasks a little more efficient within that department? One of the things that we're working through right now is updating our immunologic software. That is a software that we take permitting in on right now. Let's say if you want to apply for a fence permit, or accessory structure, or something like that. Right now, it's you're filling out a paper form. Elizabeth is then duplicating that paper form and putting it in to our software, so how do we get that online so the customer is doing it, or the resident's doing it, and we're not, we're not spending hours a week doing what has already been done? So that's something they're helping, they're working on, and we'll work with Jeff Sanders on too, assuming things go forward later tonight. Next, just under the header initiatives, set to start and conclude in two thousand twenty. The first one I have on there is, under that is identify and market developable land. As we reach out and have conversations with developers, or people that have been interested in doing projects in the past, or are currently doing projects, and we have those conversations as of, you know, what, are you interested in doing another project? And the first response we get is, you know, we would love to, to have you give us a resource or a map where it, it highlights all of the areas that you think are great developable areas. So I think in working with Andrew Dane, actually, it's something we plan to start on this Friday, and just sit down and. on this Friday and just sit down in an afternoon and highlight all those areas within the city, then work with Rhonda from a GIS standpoint and create a tool that we can say, hey, here, here's our tool for that as a developer, and here's the information kind of all in a couple pages, and then help answer questions off of that. Next, create a community dashboard coupled with a compelling story. Community dashboard is something that highlights some of our metrics, such as our population, you know, our city, when we're talking economic development here, our city is 6,000 people, but our area is, you know, 15,500. Our target market area is maybe larger than that when you talk about some of the people in Iola, Amherst, some of those surrounding areas, especially northern and part of the county and northern parts of Oaxaca County. So get that all in a tool, high school graduation rates, so on and so forth. And then we're going to couple that with a compelling story. Compelling story is some of the things that don't show up in statistics. So for someone like myself and someone who's lived here for a long, long time, we know all the things that make Wapaka great. And it is our, you know, it might for some people, it might be our parks, for some people, it might be the chain of lakes, for some people, it might be our historic Main Street, it might be our library, it might be it could be anything. We have a Justin, it might be our public works department. And, you know, couple that with, I think we have really, really good schools, second to none in the area, couple that with, we have a state park out our backyard. So it's telling that story and why why we think Wapaka is a great place to invest in, whether you're living here or wanting to come in and start the commercial business or whatever that may be. So that's that's another thing. Another goal is to develop a strategy to address retail closings. And I don't mean for this to be misleading, because it doesn't mean that that this goal is a success or failure if we get a Target or a Kohl's or something in those spaces. It is what does the retail closings mean to our community, and when one door closes, others open, and how how can we take advantage of those doors that may be open now because of that? You know, just in looking some of our in some of our past plans and the downtown market study and our city market study, I actually came across some stats recently that said, you know, when Kmart and ShopCo were open, we had six and a half times more the square footage of retail space than our market area actually suggested that we could support. So what does that reality mean? You know, what does that tell us coupled with some of the trends in retail nationwide with online shopping, so on and so forth? So, you know, does our focus now turn to, okay, you know, those big box retail things, those are those may be tough to come by, not that we're going to give up on it, but does it is there more of an opportunity for those boutique or niche things like like you see on Main Street and more retail shops like that that can create a vibrancy in other parts of the city? So so those are some of the things we'll we'll be talking about in developing a story and a and a strategy around that. The next one is establish a community development authority. This is something I've seen on every plan, every and whether it's staff work plans or other plans dating back probably five, six, seven years. The past city administrator had this on his plan, past economic development director. I've seen it in plans that were not done by those positions, and that's something that when we're talking about, you know, creating programs possibly around housing and helping workforce housing or well, helping housing is a very broad thing, and we'll get into that, too, but I think a community development authority is is absolutely worth taking a look at. Next, be visible and accessible to large and small business leaders to build a foundation for relationships. One thing, you know, I've I believe, and I've seen already in my short time here, is a lot of our development has come from the people that are here, and they want to expand. And they're here and they want to continue to invest in Wapaka because they realize the benefits of being in Wapaka and and why it's a good place to be. Certainly, just just being accessible, and that can look very different from from, you know, for example, let's say, you know, people at the the foundry or or larger employers like that, they don't necessarily want me being that visible and pounding on their door every week and saying, hey, do you need anything? No, they're busy. They they have other stuff to do, but at least being accessible when when they need assistance from the city. Also, from a small business standpoint, you know, that is a little different. I think being a little more hands on, reaching out, just seeing kind of what assistance we can provide, how things are going from a small business standpoint is something we'll look to do. You can see a couple of things I have on there. I'm currently in Rotary Club with PEG and also with Brett Rodenz as a part of the city. Continue to be active in that, and also regularly attend some of the Chamber sponsored events, including Business After Five and whatever else they may have. So that's what we're looking at there. Hold a Business Developer Summit in the fall of 2020. This is an idea that is absolutely not original. We actually got it from a meeting we had in Sheboygan. Sheboygan, the city of Sheboygan has done some pretty cool stuff recently with development. There's pretty neat things happening there, obviously, different sized community. And actually, their spark in development started with housing in 2014 is when they really saw that spark get lit. And and they had steady years of housing developments, and as as commercial people saw that or investors saw that they had the people there, then all of a sudden, commercial has picked up in the last couple of years. And these are through conversations with their city administrator and their economic development director. So I asked, you know, what did you attribute those successes to? And he said, it sounds weird, but maybe the biggest the biggest thing that we can point to is is this Business Developer Summit that we have each year, and that is just reaching out to people who have expressed interest in developing it within or investing in the community of Sheboygan and just inviting them in for a day, taking them on a bus or whatever it may be, and showing them all the things that that we think are great about in our instance or our case, Wapaka. So that might include going on a boat ride on the chain. It might include having lunch at Swan Park. It might include going to the state park, whatever those things may be, and it will likely include taking a tour and looking at those development sites that we'll we'll highlight in that tool. So so that's something we would like to coordinate for the fall of 2020. Next, utilize new brand principles to promote the city to prospective residents and to businesses. So as everyone knows, we just went through a partnership with the Chamber and the, excuse me, the CVB Board on building these brand guidelines, and there was a substantial investment in that project from both the CVB Board and the city. And I think we came up with some really, really good material. You know, you saw the videos, you saw the slogans and the marketing. So it's something that we have to make it a priority and make sure it doesn't sit on a shelf and make sure we're getting it out there and using it for for the efforts that we're doing. So kind of intertwining that with with some of the things I've already talked about. Next goal, work with the Chamber of Commerce to bring forward suggestions for implementation of wayfinding material. This is kind of another branch of almost the brand principles. It's something that's being discussed right now. Obviously, there's monetary value tied to whatever we decide to do in wayfinding, so that's something that'll be brought forward to you guys as council, and and we'll make decisions on that. But again, it's an effort that's been happening. It's it had, as I look back at at plan after plan after plan, it is something that's mentioned in almost all of them. When we're talking about wayfinding material, specifically off the Highway 10 corridor and off of our entrances to the city there, obviously, a lot of visibility, and we want to tell people what we're about from people going by. Next, encouraging housing development, development and investment, whether it's me or Andrew Dane, you've heard both of us talk a lot about this. You just heard me talk a lot about kind of what what Sheboygan has seen as successes. And it also is something that we've heard a ton from our, you know, workforce housing. It is it's it's a shortage here in not only our community, but many, many rural communities. And this, I think this will be key, and it's a key conversation in our Wapaka Growth Group, working with Dave Teal, our school superintendent, Chamber, Fox Valley Tech, everybody. I think people realize the importance of this as community partners and something that we want to really come forward with some proposals on programs and where we can help encourage some of this housing development and investment in our community. Again, I've said this before, too, but we are set much better than other communities, I believe, because of some of the improvements we've done in the last 15 years. If you look at some of the TIF districts and some of the improvements through water, sewer, roads that have been put in, we have a lot of lots and opportunity to to build. We just have to, again, kind of make that happen. Next, demonstrate value of our city services to residents. So, you know, Kathy went through her budget presentation. As we went through the budget process, we talked a little bit about some of the strides we've made over the last five to six years in mill rates and taxes and and not really giving up any city services during that point. And it's important for people to realize what they get for their city tax dollars. So I just want to make sure I I plan to bring a presentation forward. Actually, for those of you who are here, Justin did something that was similar to it when I was a park and rec director, brought forward something, I think it was actually for one of his master's projects, and I thought he had some really nice graphics that showed, especially from a public works side.
That's that's like three times you've complimented him.
I know, I'm done. I know, I'm sorry. I'm done. Yeah. So if anyone remembers, it'll be, you know, it'll it'll kind of have that same tone. But I do want to not only get that to you guys and present to you, but also meet with Angie and promote it possibly, hopefully, through the paper and our website and social media and so on and so forth. So that's something I that will be a priority this year. Goal, enhance employee work culture. This is something that's been mentioned in our strategic plan as well and some of the feedback. This is something that even if it's good, I think it's if you don't pay attention to it and you don't keep it on the front of your mind, it it can slip, and that gets to be a slippery slope. So just always, and this this can be on here every year moving forward, prioritize communication. If we can find ways to to recognize staff, and and you can do that for very, very for for free and for cheap and and for ways that don't include money or monetary value, just making efforts to do that, working with department heads to do that, and engage and develop in our future leaders or any of us, right? Any of us as city staff, I truly believe that it's our job as department heads, as city administrator, to make sure that we are training and and bringing our staff up to levels that that is expected from our residents and expected from you as council members. There's a quote that I really, really like. I got to remember it now. Really, I really love it. But it is, I think, people get worried, what if we train them and they leave, right? What if we train our our staff and they leave? And and the question is, is what if we don't train them and they stay, right? So I think we always want our staff to grow, and and we want to put that as a priority as well. Encourage participation in local government. This is something I've heard from our some of our council meetings, individual council meetings, and as people come on and and become new council members, we want to make sure they're feeling comfortable with the process, with the mechanics of a meeting, with what their expectations are as a council member and how that works. So I have reached out and collected a few policies from municipalities and from school. Actually, Mr. Sorry from the school district had a policy that he helped create at a previous school district as well for school boards. So I think we can use some of each and take a look at what fits us and and maybe come up with a policy that that helps us with orientation of new council members. And you can see some of the bullet points there. Actually, let me speak to a little a little bit to those bullet points. I think another thing along with that orientation, and it's something that I've learned that actually our former city administrator, Henry, did in a previous year, I think, go back a little ways, but he did at one time take a tour of all city facilities. So when I when I mentioned in here a new council, it just it doesn't matter if you're a new council member, if you could have been on here for 20 years, but in May, we have a new full council, and we may have one new member, we may have zero new members. But in that time period, we'd like to take you out on a maybe a bus ride like we talked about with the developers and and take a look at the parks and take a look at the library. And and sometimes we just have to walk across the hall for that, but the sewage treatment plant, when I came on board, that was probably the most eye opening for me. Jesse Landry took me through all the processes for that. And so just getting out there so so there's some familiarity with what we talk about here on a monthly basis or or twice a month. And then also educate at that same time, I think, every new May, I'd like to bring something forward and just educate new council or a new council on the roles and responsibilities of being a council member. So, you know, what does being a council member mean? What are the expectations? What does it mean here at a meeting? What does it mean outside of these meetings? And just having a conversation around that. Next, review office layout within City Hall to determine if locations of current offices are appropriate for maximizing staff production and customer service. A lot of this goes to some of our staffing changes within the community and economic development department, and really a change in my position or the city administrator position. As you guys know, the city administrator position used to be city administrator clerk, and that is now Sandy. Thank the Lord. And also, now, obviously, the city administrator has economic development duties within the job description, and how do we arrange that so I can work seamlessly or this position can work seamlessly and efficiently with our staff and not be separated within City Hall? And then, and that's something we'll be working on very, very shortly. Actually, I have a meeting next week to have a discussion about that. Last, and certainly not least, I I recognize that I am a a young, I should say inexperienced city administrator, and I'm an inexperienced economic development director, and I have to prioritize professional growth for myself if I hope to help any of our department heads or hope to help our organization continue to improve. So that's something that it it can be very easy to get caught up in the day to day stuff, and it sometimes it feels like I should, you know, I can never leave here, and I should never leave here, and I've learned so much from being within these walls, but also knowing that there's so much to learn through some of our associations, whether it be WCMA or or WIDA or whatever those things may be. So I I feel the need to prioritize those things. So I think that sums up pretty much what I have as priorities for my 2020 work plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have on on any specific things or the work plan overall.
Well done.
Yeah, absolutely. It'd be interesting to see if you make amendments to this as the year goes on and and what we're looking at at the end of, you know, at this time next year, too. So awesome. I I think you did a great job, too. Just move forward from there. I did want to comment, though, Justin, I I think the city administrator won up to you, though. You notice Justin's wearing a tie tonight. The city administrator now put on a sports coat, too.
I know. I saw you wear a tie this morning. I had to grab my coat for the meeting. And actually, Brent has a nice coat on, too, so.
Look at this guy, yep.
Yeah. You're like you're like number three now. All right, moving on, we have the zoning administrator contract for 2020. Back to you, Aaron.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so zoning administrator services, I have a memo on page 139 of your packet, and this is kind of a revision from a plan I brought forward a couple of months ago as a part of a committee of the whole meeting that outlined the next four years of the of staffing in the community and economic development department. And the things we're trying to accomplish here in 2020, one thing we knew we we had to accomplish or what we felt like we had to accomplish was getting some additional help for our staff that's currently there so they can get to some of the things in their job descriptions that we're not currently getting to, notably Rhonda with GIS things that GIS duties that help our department, but also help all of our departments. duties that help our department, but also help all of our departments, especially, I mean, whether it's mapping out cemetery stuff in the Park and Rec Department, parks or public works. There's a lot of things we can do that just we're not able to get to at this point. And the fact that I have not been here that long, I just, at this point, wasn't entirely sure, and I could be wrong, but I'm just not entirely sure if we need a full-time person yet, which was in the plan to be hired in the summer of this year. Bring them on as a planner is what I outlined in that memo. And I want to make sure I am sure of that. And actually, it was said to me at one point that, you know, you can really look at every hire as a million-dollar hire. And it's a big deal when you decide to bring somebody on. If you have somebody that is $75,000 with benefits over the course of 15 years, that's a million dollars that the organization's sinking into them. So we want to take all of those moves seriously and we want to make sure that we know, you know, what our needs are before doing that. Having said that, I could, we could go through this process and the zoning administrator service on an on-call basis may not be the answer. I am very confident that it will be a better situation that we're in right now. I'm very confident in saying that. But we will review at the end of the year, assuming this goes through, if it's the best thing long-term. So for me, I guess to really put a blanket over it, rather, you know, if we're spending $70,000 on a full-time position, this is a way to get us extra staffing for approximately $30,000. That gives us, within our operational budget, $50,000 to possibly spend on programs that we're talking about and some of these initiatives that we have in our work plan in 2020 and moving forward. So having said that, let's kind of get to the nuts and bolts. I do have what the responsibilities of the proposed zoning administrator are in that memo. We sent out an RFQ, request for qualifications, on December 17th. Excuse me. And we did receive three different submittals. You'll see them listed there. Community Planning and Consulting, that's Jeff Sanders, as you guys know him. We have Cedar Corporation out of Green Bay, and then we have MSA out of Madison. And you can see some of the highlights there from the submittals. I am recommending that we go, move forward on a one-year contract with Community Planning and Consulting with Jeff Sanders. He is the cheapest. He actually has the same dollar-per-hour rate as Cedar Corporation, but Cedar Corporation could only commit for that specific individual 80% to 90% of the year, and then they'd be jumping up to a higher rate. So it would cost us a little more money. We have had work with Jeff Sanders already, so we know exactly kind of what we're getting there. And I know I've been impressed with the work he's done and the communication and so on and so forth. So having said that, I guess we would be requesting council to approve a one-year contract with Community Planning and Consulting to perform zoning administration services for the city of Wapaka as outlined in the RFQ.
Okay, any questions, comments? I do want to ask, when we see approximately, you know, it's $85 an hour, but we're seeing approximately $30,000. If we put not to exceed $30,000, is that fair?
Yeah, it is fair. That is a conservative estimate. I'm also, I will also be working with Jeff and getting monthly reports on where we're at with that. That's fair.
Okay. Scott, go ahead.
Aaron, how is this going to affect Andrew Dane's status? Is, will he continue or get a different role? Or what's the synergy on that?
Yeah. So it doesn't impact his status at all for this year. We had planned for Andrew to be onboard for 2020. And just speaking frankly, if this type of structure were to continue in future years, it would give us more flexibility to do something, to continue something like that in the future because of the savings and we're not pushed up against kind of our budget limit. But not, I'm not speaking to what's happening in the future, but that's the position, what's it say?
Yeah. I know it's easy to try and blend these positions together, but they really are separate positions. And both of them are very important to us at this time is to rewrite our zoning. But we also need to upgrade our comprehensive plan. And, you know, the biggest impetus for that is West Fulton Street. But it needs to be looked at throughout the whole city. So we do need Andrew to help us with that part of it. And that's not something that Jeff specializes in.
Yeah, we were so used to an economic development office with one person. So I'm just kind of, it's kind of a different scenario now for a while until we see, right? Is that what we're getting at?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Yeah, the things that Andrew has been working on, as you guys know, is like, and as Mayor said, is comp plan this year, but also providing assistance in many other areas other than zoning, so.
Okay. So Aaron is requesting that we approve the one-year agreement with Jeff Sanders.
I'd move to approve the contract with Community Planning and Consulting of Appleton, Jeff Sanders, for an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Hagan, second by Kealan, that we approve of the agreement with Jeff Sanders, Community Planning and Consulting, for an amount not to exceed $30,000 for a one-year contract. Any further discussion? Sandy will color roll.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Mail.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you for that, Aaron. You're still up here. We got the assessor contract for 2020.
Okay. Thank you again, Mayor Smith. There is a memo on page 204 of your packet regarding this. Just to give a brief background, we have had Bomar Appraisal Incorporated out of Appleton do our assessor services for the past 15 years approximately. Each contract has been entered into it. It's been a two-year cycle. The relationship has been very, very good. Staff has no complaints in the work with them. We've, it's pretty rare, but we've had the same contact over that last 15 years. And the reason it's been 15 years is because that's the last time we went through a revale. And Bomar did it at that point. And it's typical to see cities just kind of stick with the same appraisal company that does or assessing service that does the revale through, until they come to that next revale, which we have not gotten to yet. However, I bring this up because our policy does state that for an operational expense of this amount, we are to get three written quotes. And unfortunately, we did have, kind of were notified of this pretty late in the game. It was like late November that we were notified of this or that it came to my attention. And at that point, we actually wrote an RFP. And it's sitting out there and could be used. But as we started talking to people, Bomar and other individuals, this late, it's just not likely that we get any interest from an assessor company. So instead of entering into a two-year contract, I guess I'm bringing this forward, saying, hey, you know, there's work that needs to be done in January, especially with our mobile home park from an assessment standpoint. And entering into a one-year contract for that $24,400 and then really exploring this idea of going out for proposals in, probably in July or August, if we feel like that's the necessary step here. And then that'll give us good responses for these services. And those companies will have time to put together proposals and have time to prepare for the workload that would come with having a client like the city of Wapaka. So I wanted to bring it forward to your guys' attention. And kind of being the situation that we're in, I guess we're recommending that council approves a one-year contract for assessor services to be performed by Bomar Appraisal for an amount not to exceed $24,400. And that contract is attached to the memo.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve.
I'll second. Motion by Kealan, second by Peterson, that we approve of entering into a one-year contract for 2020 for assessor services to be performed by Bomar Appraisal Incorporated of Wisconsin for an amount not to exceed $24,400. Discussion.
Yeah. Can you explain the difference again between a revale that's done every so, what, 10 years is it or something?
Well, it can be, and Kathy can speak to this too, but it's triggered by where, many times, it's triggered by the ratio of assessed value for...
Equalized value.
Equalized value for residential or commercial.
For the whole city. The whole city has to be under 90% for three years. We just, we're not there yet. So we're getting closer to 90%. That our assessed value is less than what the state is saying the fair market value is. So equalized value is a formula that the state determines what the market value is of a property so that if I was comparing a property in Wapaka with a property in the town of Farmington, it's based on the equalized value. And you don't need to have a revale until you are below the mark, that 90% of that market value for three years. In the fourth year, that's when you would need it.
So we would not be looking at a revale during this period that we're extending?
No. We haven't had to, we haven't been under 90% for a long time. The biggest thing would be is, is that you may be, like the town of Farmington is at 89%. So the clock starts ticking for them this year. But the equalized value gets set each year by the state. So you may be under, you may be over. So depending on what the market values of all of the different things that go into that formula will determine what it is. So you could be, yeah, I'm going to be under 90 one year, but I'm close enough or I have, there's a change in the market. Houses are selling less now, so then you could have a change. So it has a lot to do with the equalized value.
Sure. And that would be, 90% would be on average across all properties, is that?
It's, the whole city is valued. That includes our manufacturing, commercial and our residential.
There could be some properties that are below 90% right now, whereas others are above 90, but on average?
No, nobody is, nobody, it's not an average. The whole city. So if my house is assessed at $100,000, but my equalized value ratio is 105, then that would be, my house would be valued at 105. So it's, it doesn't have anything to do with a certain house. It's the ratio that's given to the whole city, for every property within the city.
So if you were to look at your current property tax statement, all property tax statements, what Kathy is saying will, does show up on your property tax statement, whether it's your home or your business or your land or whatever the case is, it will have two amounts on there. It will have your fair market value, which is what she's talking about, or your assessed value. And there's also that ratio that's on there too. You can see what our ratio is. That ratio on my property is the same as it is on yours.
That ratio is the same for all, everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. That's what she's trying to, yeah.
Okay.
And Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, if we fall below 90% for three years, we're required to do a revale. But we could do a revale at any time.
If we feel that there's enough of, the sales in a certain area, you can start doing revales in quarter sections. If you wanted to not do the whole city at a time, you can start doing market adjustments based on the number of sales in an area. That this, this quarter section of the city's got a lot more sales. So we're going to revale that whole, that whole quarter section and then start working around the city. You could, you could get that, that type of revale done. You can get it so that they have to come in and inspect your property. But most communities do the market analysis because it's a lot cheaper. There's a computer program that does it based on the sales. And so there's, there's different options on the revale that you can do. But that's, that's one of the options that the city would come into.
The reason why I brought it up is just that when it comes time to renew the contract for the company that winds up doing the revale, it might be especially important to bid that out, simply to get a fresh pair of eyes looking at things in case, you know, just to prevent the potential for sort of corruption or...
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you. We would certainly, we would and will when it comes time for a revale, whether it's, you know, as Kathy mentioned, there's many different types of revales. It could be an exterior revale, it could be a total revale, it could be a quarter section revale. And we will take that out for proposals.
Okay. Anything else? We do have a motion in a second. So you ready to vote? Sandy will color roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Mail.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next up, we have the issues, project discussion. This falls under that 30-minute maximum we always talk about. And as I promised at the last council meeting, all the person, Martin, had brought up a question on the dance hall permit. And so I said we would bring it back. I know that Sandy and Kathy and Aaron have done some research here. And so, again, it isn't going to take 30 minutes, I don't think. So be relieved. But Aaron, you want to just start?
Sure. So with Sandy's and Kathy's help, we did come up with, we reviewed the state statutes relating to this. State statutes basically state that it doesn't require that we have a dance hall permit. It just states that a municipality may enact a dance hall permit and then has to follow these requirements. We then looked at our ordinance and what do we have for an ordinance regarding dances and dance halls? And it just, I think it might be one of our longer ordinances, 1224. And that is in your packet on page 207. So we, I did reach out to Russ Van Gumpel to see what his experience was with these and spoke with Chief Ozell. There are some things in here and we did kind of learn what these were meant to protect against. One of the big things when these were enacted, they were meant to protect against adult entertainment coming into a municipality. And there are some provisions in there for that. It also helps with enforcement of live places where police officers or the police department will know that there will be live entertainment, large groups. Actually, this also can get issued for like, if you remember the fireman's dance or something like that. There are also things within this ordinance that states that there are requirements that a deputy sheriff or a law enforcement officer be present for something like that. To give you, it also imposes some time restrictions on how long these can go into the night. Right now, our ordinance states that live bands or music can't happen after 1:00 a.m. and in between 1:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., it's prohibited. So those are some of the things that the ordinance has in it right now that if we repealed it, we would, I'd have to look further into it to see if some of those things are protected in other ordinances we have. But I am not certain that they are right now. To give you an idea of how many we issue, I think it was last year was 14. To give you an idea of how many we issue, I think it was, last year was 14, and it's 25 bucks per, so we're looking at a revenue of $350 per year total. And that's really, that's kind of what, what we found out in our little research, and I guess knowing some of that and not knowing if we have some of those things, or some of those protections in other ordinances, I, right now at least, I would suggest not repealing it, and that I would keep it in place. That'd be my recommendation. If we wanted to put more staff time into it to see if it's worth repealing, and if we have those protections elsewhere, we can certainly do that, too. But that's, that's a little bit on the findings of that.
Okay, any questions or comments? Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, I did notice that in section eight and nine, it makes references to the Judiciary Committee, so we might wish to take a peek at revising those sections.
Good point. Yeah, there are a few things in here that are in need of update. That's the most notable. Good point.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? All right, so we're okay? All right, let's move on. Communications, recommendations of the mayor. Again, just want to remind you of that, two meetings that got changed, and also want to thank Lori Chestnut. She came to our mayor department head meeting today, so that's councilperson number two that has been to a meeting. We do hold those the third Tuesday of every month, and they start at 2:00. So if you can attend, just let us know ahead of time, so we have, one extra seat fills the table, so if we have more than one, we'll, we'll need to put it in a different spot. But if you'd like to attend, it's open. All right, anything else for the good of the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting, Tuesday, February 4, 2020, subject to call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Drive safe, be careful. And I got to change my final statement. Instead of go pack, I got to say go Bucks, so go Bucks.